All right, I call this March 11, 2024 Plan A Commission Meeting to Order. First item is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any? Any points or any issues or discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, second is the adoption of the minutes from February.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? First item on the agenda is subdivision New Road for Proposed Development, The Point. Applicant Maygreen Properties LLC, tax map numbers 484-0000-008, and 484-0000-075. New Road, Walters Way, 837 feet, Council District Two. Yes?
Hi, my name is Jeff Kirschner. I'm a planner with York County. And I'm presenting the first business, as I just said, which is a plenary plat for a new road called Walters Way, located between Highway 59 and Highway 274 in the Lake Wylie area. There's a facility map showing the couple existing parcels in the area where the right-of-way will be dedicated. Here's a plenary plat from the applicant showing the proposed new right-of-way. This will be part of a proposed future commercial development. But right now, we're just looking at the roadway. And it'll be a commercial roadway basically connecting Charlotte Highway with Hansmill. There's a zoom-in showing the road right-of-way. Because it's a new road, it has to be a preliminary plat. And it'll be approved as preliminary plat. And then we can go on to civil plan review and final plating for the roadway. The proposed development is still being worked on. Obviously, we can't go to, we haven't done the civil plans yet. But it will be minor recombinations and new lots. But they'll be able, once the new road is dedicated, they'll be able to use that as frontage and access. The, for the findings, a lot of the findings that we usually do for preliminary plat don't apply, but number three does. And a Tier Two TIA has been completed in a mitigation agreement approved by county council. Number four, the development provides adequate street connectivity and pedestrian facilities to address public health and safety. The proposed Walter Way sixty-foot public right-of-way will be located between highways 274 and 49. And it will include sidewalks to connect the parcel with the development into existing sidewalk facilities. And of course, when we do civil plans, the buildings will be connected to that sidewalk for the roadway as well. And the other findings are not really applicable for just a roadway preliminary plat. Staff recommends approval of this application. We've looked at the preliminary plat and the design for the road, at least in the preliminary plat stage, and believe it meets our standards.
I got a question for you, or a couple. Are the intersections on Charlotte Highway and Hansmill with the new road, are either of them lighted?
No, this will not be lighted intersections. Either one of them, the five points has a light, obviously.
Okay. Are they going to be right turn only, or how's that going to work?
They're, they're, I don't think it's zoom anymore, but it's going to be just a two-lane road right-of-way, road right-of-way. And it will be built to county standards as a commercial road. But as far as like, there's not going to be like a road improvements or a light installed or things like that. The mitigation is, I think, financial mitigation, and the TIA called for, for a future, I guess, intersection project.
Yeah, I was worried about, especially on Charlotte Highway, because that's a pretty, that's a good curve right there, so sight distance. That's why I was asking, is it left turn out or onto Charlotte Highway? Or do you know?
I don't think it's restricted to, I don't think it's restricted to turn.
That's full access.
It's full access, that's the wording, yeah, full access.
Okay. That's, I'm just saying, that's a concern of mine, left turnouts. Yeah, go ahead.
I had similar concerns, and mainly because of, can you back up one slide maybe? Don't we have a figure? What is down there at the bottom is boat and RV storage.
Okay.
As far as I know, those are always going to be moved in and out of there with trailers. So folks trying to come out and get on 274 North with a trailer, or trying to come down 49 South with a trailer and cross traffic, I think if each of those entrances was limited to right turn only, they could still wind up going where they want to go, but you would not have things with trailers trying to cross like that. And so there was nothing in the TIA that recommended any of that in the roadway to prevent those turns. Is that right?
No, it wasn't, yeah, it was full access. And that was what was recommended. So, and as far as the design, obviously, there'll be the curb cut radius, the sight distance will meet our standards, the stacking between drives. So, but obviously, that doesn't address, that addresses some, you know, being able to see, but obviously, it still would allow a left turn.
Sure, I, just sitting and thinking about this, if you're coming south on 274, you can make the right in there to return your trailer. If you want to go south when you leave, you can come out and go south with the right turn only. And then the same with 49. And if you're wanting to go back north on 274 or 49, then you've got a controlled intersection to go through with that trailer, right? I think that would be wiser to limit those ends to just right turns, mainly because of the trailers that are going to be, folks are going to be towing. But that's all I have.
It's a concern, though, I mean, from an engineering standpoint.
Yeah, I would agree. I had, I had one question. There was a council-approved plan for the Goat Farm property across, directly across from this on 274. And part of that was a realignment of the existing driveway. It's not on this document, and I understand why, but would that end up lining up with the driveway across the way? Or how would that be managed?
If this was a new intersection, because this would become an intersection as a new road.
So it'd be a four-way?
It would have to meet the, any new projects would have to align, either on either side.
With it, okay.
With it, so it had to either meet the separation standards or align at that intersection. So I can't speak to like another project, but that would make sense just because it would be a new intersection.
Yeah, and the point I was trying to make was it probably wasn't a consideration when this was presented, because it was just recently approved. And still, that's going to end up making it a four-way.
Yeah, the concept, the concept for this did predate that. But of course, they would be, they're right across the street from each other.
All right, so that prompts, if it becomes a four-way, does that mean a light will be installed? Maybe, maybe not. Depends on.
That was my initial question.
I can speak with the traffic cams and everything like that.
Right? Right, okay.
I mean, it's already close to another light intersection, though.
Right. All those trade-offs, yeah.
I guess what we're saying is it's going to present problems.
Mike, this might even be a placeholder, because according to the overlay, there already exists storage just south of that. So I'm not sure another storage facility under the current ordinance.
This is boat and RV storage.
Is that different?
It is different from, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is not self-storage.
Yeah.
Defined differently in the used.
Different definition, okay, because the other one is also.
It's a different use category, right? You see, I've studied, I've paid attention.
Very good.
Okay, all right.
Good job.
Are there any other questions for Jeff? Thank you. Does anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, but with the restrictions on right turn-only access to that road on either end.
And lefts out?
No, there'll be no lefts out. So it's right turn access, or either coming to that road or leaving that road, right turns only.
Correct.
And I don't know, am I allowed to do that, or am I out of bounds?
You went slightly out of bounds.
Okay.
Like I was going to say was that the TIA was approved, and the TIA would have looked at these proposed uses. And they did not find a need for making this a right-of-way only. They felt a full access was fine, based upon the TIA. So they would have looked at the trips, the area, the proposed uses here, and determined that there was not a need for anything besides a full access. Otherwise, they would have said that in that TIA document, and they didn't.
Okay, great, so question is how does the TIA take into account different types of vehicular traffic, not just uses?
They would look at, if it's a boat and RV storage, they would look at those type of uses and that sort of vehicle coming in and out of there. Also, if anything was to change in their preliminary plat, when they actually came in for civil construction drawings, if there was a change that was exceeding what the TIA required, they'd go back and redo it. So if it was a different use or a different kind of uses, they'd have to go back in there and redo the TIA. Based upon these uses, they did not see a need for any kind of restriction to that access point.
All right, so I guess the parliamentary question is, is the TIA sufficient to stand on its own, and we are not allowed to make any recommendations beyond what a TIA recommends? Or are we permitted to do that?
It was to give you information of what was actually data found. So the data found that this is what is necessary, and this is what is not necessary. So that's what I'm saying, that they didn't find that that was going to be an issue.
So is it, I guess what I'm asking is, is my motion out of order and contrary to the rules, or I'm not allowed to make that addendum like we do on other things for this? Is that?
Any thoughts from legal in terms of going beyond what's required here?
I don't think that it's specifically prohibited, but if you wanted to delve further into the issue of your motion, happy to go into executive session and walk you through some things.
Okay, then I guess I'm requesting executive session real quick so I can get my head screwed on straight.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor have gone into executive session? You will be going into executive session in return.
Sure.
Well, looky here. Um, he's coming.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll return to the regular meeting now. No action was taken in the executive session. And so as of right now, we're standing. Mike, you have made a motion.
And I'm gonna withdraw that motion.
Okay. Do we have a new motion? I will make a motion to approve the plat as shown. Double check. Yeah, there's no, there's no extra conditions, correct, Jeff?
I'll second.
All right, so we have a discussion?
You want to go first, Mike?
Yeah, I will, just. The, the concerns I have are with the type of vehicles trying to get in and out of there. I, I understand the TIA has been done, but I, I'd like to have our concerns passed on to county council to make sure that there, there is clear understanding of the types of vehicles and trailers that are gonna be going in and out of there and whether anything beyond what perhaps the TIA has recommended might be warranted.
And I have concerns about the site distance, especially on forty-nine coming out. And any kind of left turns in that site distance. I think it'd be nice for us to pass that on to council also.
Does anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss? All right, if not, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving? Anyone opposed? No, and I think just Bonnie, if you could, just for the record, make sure that council knows that there's a couple of concerns. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is resoning twenty-four dash ten. Will McCormick, applicant William, and Shannon McCormick, Wayne McCormick, Rebecca McCormick, Van Voorhees, and Molly Leek requesting to rezone a three point six-three acre portion of two parcels from R U D to A G C. The subject parcels are located at Barshiba Road North, Clover. Properties are referenced as tax map numbers two five five zero 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 eight three and zero one zero. Counsel District Three, Mr. Atkins.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening, Diane.
This request is to rezone a three point three acre portion of two parcels from R U D to A G C. And the purpose here is to be able to remove the split zone status to be able to have a recombination plat. Properties are located on the, the west, northwestern part of the county. It's off of Barshiba Road. These two large parcels are mostly, they're agricultural. There, there are two homes on there, but the area here, as you can see, these are mostly large lots, undeveloped areas. In case you carry shoes to the left or the right there, there's actually metro and greenhouses. Doing some expanses over there for some greenhouses. Zooming in here to the property, the area that's been circled in green, that's what we're looking at for the actual rezoning. That's the area that's currently zoned R U D. So you can see the two existing homes on each parcel. For the environmental here, there are, there's some topography, but there are two large streams throughout the parcels. For zoning for the area, this combination of A G C and R U D. For the, zooming into here, that area there on Hatch, that's where you can see, that's the property that's actually zoned R U D. And so this is the portion that's part of this property. And there's a very tiny little finger that extended off into, into O one O, also being rezoned to A G C. And they intend to be able to recombine these parcels here in the future. Future land use map here is agricultural. And as we know, this is areas for farmlands and timberlands, also some very residential developments. We're recommending approval. It aligns with the comprehensive plan of the future land use map. And this request remove existing split zone status. Any questions for staff?
Just a quick one on that previous chart. If you go back up to the drawing, one more. Yep, so that sliver in the bottom one, that's not part of the top property. They're just talking about rezoning that little piece?
So that's why this parcel, this rezon application has two parcels. So it includes this parcel and that parcel. So that's, that parcel has to be included because they're getting that little sliver right there. So that's two parcels.
Okay, so that little sliver is part of the bottom parcel?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, yeah. When I looked at that, I was like, why is that property protruding into the other property? But it's not.
The parcel line is the red.
Yeah, okay, that's what was really confusing looking at this.
Over time, this property's been recombined and lot lines have been moved over time. And so I went back just to make sure that we weren't, you know, maybe there was a little mapping error, but there's not. That's how it is, so we gotta do, gotta get them both.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, does anybody have any other questions for Diane? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of fixing existing mapping? Uh, all those in favor of the recommendation? Anyone opposed? No, move on to next item, which is rezoning twenty-four dash twelve. Tony Smith, applicant, The Home Place Trust, Jeff Curtis, segment owner, requesting to rezone a five point zero nine acre portion of a six point oh six four acre parcel from A G C to R U D. Subject parcel is located on Cedar Grove Road, Clover. The property is referenced as tax map number two five one zero 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 one two five. District Three, Mr. Atkins.
Apologize for my typo. This is not Cedar Grove Road. The request here is to rezone a five point zero nine acre parcel, portion of a parcel from A G C to R U D. Very similar, the property here would like to be able to subdivide the parcel into two lots, and the request would also remove the split zone parcels status. Properties located on the western part of the county between Black Highway and Sutton Spring Road. This area here is still a very rural, very large lots, but there are some lots over time that have been created that are less than five acres. Zooming into the property here, it is vacant, very large tree cover in the back and an open pasture towards the front. But across the road here, there are some parcels and even next door that are less than five acres. Topography, in the back of the property is a lot of topography where those trees are, but the front of the parcel is mostly flat. So the area here in the hatch mark, that's the area to be rezoned from A G C to R U D. Also in the area here is A G C zoning district as well as rural development R U D. Comprehensive plan for the area here is agricultural, which as we know, that's for farmlands and timberlands and very low density residential development. We're recommending approval. This request does not align with the comprehensive plan of the future land use map. However, we have criteria that we looked at, and we're looking at these ones that don't quite align. For instance, there are other properties in the area that are zoned R U D. A portion of this property is R U D. Properties across the road are also R U D. And then, like I mentioned, also, there are other properties in the area that are similar size. There's a lot of three acre parcels in the area. And this request remove the split zone status. Any questions for staff?
So there's gonna be, it's gonna create two lots.
Two lots.
Do we know where those lots are gonna be?
I believe in your package, I think I included a.
Exhibit A.
An exhibit in there.
Okay.
And that did show where that new line was gonna be gone.
Okay.
It's, it's essentially, it's right about here.
Okay, it was not highlighted, but there's.
Yeah. You can see a little line.
Fallout gets it, yeah. I tripped over that one.
Okay, okay.
Are there any other questions?
I just, real quick for my education and everybody else's, what is, what is magical about two acres? Is there something magical in the code about two acres?
Nothing magical at all.
Just wonders what caused them to wanna go exactly two acres, but okay.
Um, you mean for the.
Cause, cause as everything gets shuffled around, we're trying to get a little bit over two acres for each one, right? So.
I think they're just probably gonna locate a place where they can subdivide it to be able to make sense.
Sure, okay.
To get to, and meet setbacks and that sort of thing, so.
Okay.
It's an odd lot, that little piece in the back corner there.
Yes, this is odd overlay, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? No. Next item on the agenda, rezoning twenty-four dash thirteen. Richard Burrell, Barbara Jane Burrell, requesting to rezone a zero point two nine five acre parcel from R M X twenty to R S F thirty. The subject parcel is located on Saint Paul Church Road, Clover. Property is referenced as tax map number three sixty-four zero 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 five one. Counsel District Two, Ms. Lott.
This is request to rezone a point two nine five acre portion of a parcel from R M X twenty, R S F thirty. And the purpose here is to be able to recombine that small portion with the property that's adjacent to it. Properties located just outside of the town of, town of Clover. Zooming into the area here, this is a combination of some rural areas here, some undeveloped properties, as well as some large lot subdivisions. Everything in the area that's gray is the town of Clover. Zooming in here is a vacant parcel for the property which is being rezoned. They want to be able to recombine this small portion with this property right here. They're gonna, they'd like to sell this property here and like to be able to just get a little bit more land to that, to make that setback a little bit more appropriate. So that's what they wanna do for, for, just to be able to market it better. Property here for rezoning is a combination, there's R S F thirty, forty, R M X twenty in the area. Future land use map for the area is single family residential. And as we know, that's where you typically have, uh, single family detached homes. We're recommending approval. The request here aligns with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan. Any questions for staff?
This, this is what I meant to ask about the two acres. I got ahead of myself, cause this one's moving just to two. That's why I was asking you. I didn't wanna, I thought I might've confused you before, cause there really wasn't two acres in the last one. It was for this one, because it just gets them both to two acres, and I thought there's some.
No, there was nothing magical.
Something in the code that would.
I think they just wanted to be able to put some property from one to the other.
Cool.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Seconds, but with the conditions, right? Cause there is a condition on that.
What are our conditions?
There is a condition, correct? Thank you for catching that.
Just to not have it double.
Yeah, just have it recorded. Yeah.
Sorry. So I'll amend the motion to include the, um.
Yeah.
Within ninety days.
Correct.
Within ninety days.
Yeah.
Do we have a second to the amended motion?
A second.
All right, is there any discussion? Are all those in favor? Anyone opposed? No? All right. Next item, planning commission to review and provide a recommendation to amend chapter one fifty-five zoning code to modify separation requirements for certain uses in the Lake Wiley zoning overlay.
So this request, or this text amendment here is for the Lake Wiley overlay. It's all focused on what they call a use separation. Hopefully you have a chance to read through the documentation that I provided for you, as well as any of the public comments, maybe you watched the video. So what we're looking at here is to be able to make amendments to this section of the code. I'm gonna go through every section here that we're gonna just kinda like highlight for, for this process. The first thing here is this, to change this section here for vehicle service and repair and customization. That was simply to be able to align that use with what's actually in the use table. So it's just a very minor change, because it was written in a way that did not actually line up with a specific use within the table. So that was that change right there. This next section here was establishing a new land use. And so the purpose for that is, right now, there are properties that are out within the overlay that are considered nonconforming, because they don't make that separation requirement. So if they wanted to come in there and to be able to do any work on their property, they couldn't do it if it was expanding the footprint at all. And so by taking that, adding that section to it, removes that issue, it's only for a new land use, for a new applicant coming in, applying to do something in the area. The next change was to increase the distance from six hundred and sixty to one thousand feet. It's very simple explanatory, that's an increase of the distance. The next one here is of the same use. So as the current code is currently written, if you're locating a new business within these, within these five uses, they must separate from all of the other five uses. And so you have to have a car wash away from a gas station, away from a restaurant, away from a self-storage. But this one is saying it's only from the same use, only from yourself. So if I'm a gas station coming in, I must locate a thousand feet from another gas station, but not necessarily a thousand feet from another restaurant. So it removes that five categories to just yourself. And the last one here is, um, is you can have the proposed use on the same lot if you also, or adjacent with the cross-access. And I've got some illustrations here to kinda go over how all these were actually going to be able to work. But in some cases, you might have a company coming in that they're gonna do a Starbucks and a Jimmy John's on one parcel. Well, this would allow that to happen. And if they didn't do that, if they had restaurants nearby them, they could have it as long as you have that cross-access easement, and we'll show that in a second. So imagine you're on Charlotte Highway in Lake Wiley, and you own this property right here, and you'd like to develop it. You'd come look at the map, we would look and see what's out there right now. And so right now, we have on the north side, we have some apartments, we have C V S, Goddard, Goddard School. On the south side, there's a storage, tire place, oil change, gas station, car wash. So we know we already have some uses that are here. So first thing we would do is we would look at, as the current code is written, this U-Haul right here would eliminate all of these uses, because it's within six hundred and sixty feet. That line right there, they could only go like right there, obviously. So this property here could not do any of those five uses. That's how it's currently written. With the amendment, we're adding some changes to it. So now we're gonna look at, this is how the amendment would be. If you wanted to come in here, if you were gonna be a U-Haul, well, that line is still here. So you, obviously you couldn't do that. Here's your, here's a thousand feet for other uses right here. So a drive-through, because there's no drive-through that's nearby here, that could go there. But you, and you might be able to get a car wash if you were to just put it right there. So that amendment would be able to allow now a drive-through restaurant, as well as a car wash, if you locate it right there. But even how it's written right now, the other uses would still not be able to go there. And kinda talking through that, that cross-access easement, let's assume we have a, a Zaxby's here and a McDonald's right here, and Taco Bell wanted to come in here. Well, they can do that only if they can get an access easement from Zaxby's and McDonald's. That would make them able to come, as the same adjacent property. So that's an overview of how we're gonna do, how the amendments are, are written. So I can go right now, we had some questions that were given ahead of time. Thank you. And so I'm gonna go ahead and answer those four questions. So the first one was, who was the group or individual that requested the modifications of this section? Well, some time ago, a developer addressed council regarding this section of the code. Had some concerns, had some issues how it was written. And so council then asked staff to go and give us some options for consideration, to be able to address, maybe modify the code. And so we provided four options, four alternatives, four ways to modify that. And council selected two, this is a hybrid of two of those four, four options. Next question was, what was the purpose of revising the language in section one fifty-five? And like I've already mentioned, it was simply a matter of making that text relate to the actual use table. So the next one was, what was the original purpose or the intent of the six sixty? Well, as it's supposed to work, is you have a zoning code that implements a policy recommendation that came from a small area plan, that came from comments and inputs during the public engagement process. So it kinda routed that through. We had a smaller area plan, we heard the public, and they said, they had too many storage units, facilities, car washes, and fast food restaurants. That was their comment. And so when we had those comments, we figured, okay, what kind of policy was what the land use plan does? What kind of policy will address those comments? And so we have this policy here, consider requiring special exceptions for regulations to be able to discourage particular land uses. Hence, you have the policy. When you have the policy, the next step is to do an ordinance amendment. And so then we come to the zoning code. So it follows public comment, smaller area plan, zoning code. And the second part of that same question was, what is the purpose or the intent? Well, the zoning code has a section there that talks about purpose. And so I've highlighted areas here. And the purpose of that use separation was to be able to provide goals to, to build a balance of mixed uses. There were so many properties in the area that was being eaten up by certain types of uses. We weren't getting, they weren't getting, the community didn't feel like they were getting a good balance. The small area plan identified that oversaturation, over-concentration. And so as it says right there in five A, the purpose of section is to prevent concentration of automobile-oriented uses in Lake Wiley overlay. That kinda goes over what the actual intent was. And then your last question was, what are the benefits and hazards of expanding the distance a thousand feet? That's kind of a strange question to kinda figure out hazards and benefits of that one. So what we think about this is being, it's more of a trade-off. This is a balancing tool. So by reducing that separation that went from same uses, and so instead of being separated from all of these five categories, we're looking at just the same, you're going to be able to increase the opportunity. And so maybe to balance that increase is to increase the separation to a thousand feet. So it's sort of a balancing from one for the other. And overall, this hopefully would be able to have opportunity for certain just in development while still controlling that oversaturation. So those are the four questions that you provided, you asked of me, and I'm open for any other questions you might have.
All right, can we back up to the previous one? Again, thank you very much, cause this has been a complicated thing to look through, and, and we had lots and lots of data thrown at, the folks getting home can't see this, but we had a stack of stuff to go through and, and four hours' worth of council meeting. God bless them with all the, the comments that they had. We could back up one more, I think is where we're, okay. So we, we have the separation distance, and the, the first thing here is that there are too many storage places in fast food restaurants, and they're trying to avoid having that in the overall area. I'm, I'm curious why there wasn't any consideration to something that might be in a larger scale of density per larger area. So what this is doing is, in my mind, you can just keep going every thousand feet. And as you keep going every thousand feet, you can have another and another and another and another. So it doesn't necessarily keep the concentration of those types of businesses out of the overlay per se, it spreads them out more. And maybe I'm not looking at this right, and you could help me understand better. So I, I was thinking more, what is the concentration of look per this square amount of place? We can't have any. And then there's a separation of that until the next per square amount of space. And I'm not sure if I'm articulating this well, but are you following what I'm asking?
I, I think I follow what you're asking, because you're talking about, by doing this a thousand feet, we're spreading things out, so it's, but they're still there. So over time, the opportunity would diminish of where they could go, because they're prohibited to go because of the limitations of things that are nearby. So it would, it would. So it would, it would reduce the overall concentration within the overlay. So maybe not so much on a specific geography, it may not be within this radius, we're going to reduce that, but in the overall development of this area here. And if you're not familiar with the overlay, it's pretty, pretty large. It goes, you know, all the way from Buster Boy Bridge, traveling over to, I think, Kingsbury, and then down south on 49. So there's, and a lot of that property is already not even zoned for it. So you're looking at certain areas where you can actually do these uses. So you're already limiting that to begin with.
Okay.
And so allowing these to happen in that general area would then limit what other things could come there.
Let me see if I've understood you well. Then by, by going to 1,000 feet and allowing what may happen there, you're going to reach a critical mass where you'll run out of your 1,000 feet, and you don't have another place to go.
Correct.
Okay.
Essentially, yes.
Okay, all right. Because a lot of the comments I saw seemed to be focused on different areas of this overlay, and saying, oh, we got enough of that here, we don't want that here. And I was trying in my mind to reconcile how that desire could be met with the 1,000-foot rule.
Right, so imagine if you had a blank slate, and there was nothing there. Then you're going to have 1,000, 1,000, 1,000. So yeah, I can see what you're thinking, that's just, it's still going to be there, but we're not working at the blank slate, we're working with an overly developed area.
Right.
And so it's just kind of like those pockets are still remaining.
And that, that's really, it's tough to put all that on a map and show all the permutations and combinations that could occur to help people really understand that, yeah, you might see some things now, but the restrictions that are in place are not going to allow 10 times that amount of the same stuff in that same spot.
Correct.
Okay.
And I think part of what we were trying to do in the small area plan was to not replicate the development pattern from 49 and 274. That was, that was one of the goals, is just, 49 is, you know, it's, it's in its place right now, and we're dealing with that as it is. But we can learn from that, in fact, to not replicate that on areas that haven't developed, and that's 274.
Okay, that's all I have.
I have a question. Number two, when it talks about when establishing a new land use. I know there's a number of businesses that would be considered nonconforming right now. Would this allow them to expand the business if they chose to do so?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
So for instance, there's one right now that's a, a car wash that was being, you know, updated to current standards, and they had to operate within their footprint, and so it hems them in. And so if they had the ability to be able to maybe work without having to worry about that current footprint, they may be able to do, I'm not saying they didn't, but they get the opportunity to do a better, more functioning site.
Okay, that's good. I guess when we're talking about the number of properties here, I know this really essentially stretches from Buster Boy Bridge all the way down to five points, essentially, correct? And even a small portion out on 557?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so. And I know most of the property, the commercial property, that's owned commercial, is developed already. So what I'm trying to do is understand, how many properties is this truly affecting right now? And then if it went to 1,000, does it include more? Does it, does it basically provide the band for any remaining? I don't know, I don't know if we can answer that tonight. I was wondering, is there, is there some way maybe we can get a map showing something along that line? So we, so I can visually see?
Sure, I have a map almost completed actually for that purpose, to be able to visually see how that is going to affect it. And I can just sort of speak to it without being held to the exact number of the exact things. But I will say that there are still a few remaining properties on 49 that are vacant, there are still a few. Couple of them are zoned UD, so they're going to require to get a rezoning anyway. But there are some GC properties out there that are vacant, that might be both within and outside of that separation requirement as it is right now. And then, like I mentioned before, one of the goals was to be able to replicate that on 274. 274, there's more opportunity right now outside of them. There's a couple of stations there right now, as you've heard of. But there are still some properties that are not developed that would allow that. They are beyond the 1,000 feet and the 660, as it is right now. But I could not tell you exactly right now.
Yeah, I understand.
But there's opportunity, and there's things that have been constrained, so there's both.
Okay. Does anybody else have a question?
Yeah, one of the things that came out of the council meeting, and it was unusual that counsel got to see this before it came through Planning Commission, for whatever reason. It did get kicked back to us, and one of the requests was to produce a map that actually showed the properties that were available or that would be impacted by the rule number one, and then number two, a change to 1,000 feet. So which, I, personally, I would still like to see that. That's something that the public requested as well. But I think it, with all due respect, I think we, we're not here to rubber stamp something tonight. We need to look at this as charged to determine the best path forward. You know, whether that be changing this, or, you know, considering some other alternatives. So I think we need to quantify what the opportunity is, and then look at the remaining individual properties that haven't been developed. Because the intent of this overlay that was approved two years ago was to limit the number of similar businesses along the corridor. Couldn't do much on 49, but as you said, going south on 274, we do have the opportunity to look at this a little bit closer, so.
And I can, I can work on providing a map. I will say it's difficult in some ways to be able to do that, because this, in my example here, for instance, is we measure them to where actually the building is.
Mm-hmm.
And so to do that measurement, you know, I could, I can easily do it from parcel to parcel, but when you go to that measurement, there may be opportunities that I don't want to out, rule out a piece of property where maybe some inventive and creative civil engineer could figure out where to put that.
Sure.
So, you know, we can get it closer, get an idea.
Well, I think you actually stated that some of the properties would not be affected by the 660.
Yeah.
That they're far enough apart today.
Yes, yes.
So let's say there's 12 properties out there, maybe three or four we can eliminate. I just think we have to quantify, that people like to use, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater. If this is an issue of half a dozen or less lots, let's take a look at it and see what the ramifications are, and where these rules apply.
Yep, you can do that.
Thank you.
Dan, when was the last time we did a full-blown TIA on this section? To know, first of all, the capacity of the highway itself? Is it, is it being taxed already right now with everybody? With all built up right now? When was the last transfer state, transportation study done?
I really, I would have to go back and see what was the last thing that was developed. And then, you know, it wouldn't have been the entire corridor, it's only going to be between intersections or between lights. So I wouldn't know how, you know, I could find out when the last thing was approved. Was there a TIA done, and what was the geography of that, to kind of get ideas to that? I mean, we have data in terms of trips, that's always available for us. We know how many cars are traveling through there, but when you get to capacity, that's a whole different thing.
Right. It's level of service through here with lights, the way, the way they look at it, with lights and queues and everything.
Right.
It's all that put in together.
Right.
So, yeah, I'd be worried, you know, before we decide on this, that, that would, we would need that data. I, I would.
Right, and I don't, I can be pretty certain that you're not going to get a full corridor-wide TIA study because never, they don't usually go that far. And so I have to go back and see what we've had to be able to give you an idea. On 49, we've had a few done recently for 274 that can provide some information about, about level of service at the different intersections and different lights. Thanks.
Diane, a good portion of the comments from the council meeting, a good portion of folks, wanted the separation requirement eliminated from the comments that I, that I heard. So have we looked at these auto-oriented uses? Have we looked at what expects or exception process would look like for approval for those with the separation requirements eliminated? Have we looked at that to see what that looked like?
We did not look at that. We offered four opportun, or four options for counsel to look at. It was not, it did not include a special exception.
Can you just clarify for me one more time? Back under number two, where it talks about no separation being required if the proposed use is on the same lot or a lot adjacent to the use listed with a cross-access easement. I understand the same line. But what would be the benefit of doing it on an adjacent lot with a cross-access easement? That could literally, it seems like it's an expansion by another way.
Sure, I can see that. I think the benefit of that is access management. And so let's say you have a development where it's going to have out parcels for a, a, a fast food restaurant, and then you have one next door. This is to be able to minimize that access. So I guess it's a trade-off sort of thing, and you can have that. Because there was some discussion about concentrating things like uses together. And so if we're going to do that, we have to make sure it's going to function well. And so if we're going to allow that sameness adjacent, then it must be able to minimize the trips that are coming through that by having that cross-access easement.
Would you also consider, in addition to cross-access easements, a second option like shared driveways, which would potentially eliminate one from?
Well, it might actually be, end up being a share in some cases, where it'll be an east, maybe they can actually just have the one, one curb cut and share an access point. But are you saying to be able to make that part of the language, to say that they must share?
I guess I just, I'd like that as an option, because, you know, like with this example here, if Taco Bell has a curb cut over Zaxby's and McDonald's, and they could still have one out on 49. My thing would be, the goal, I think, is to try to minimize the number out on 49. So if they combined, you know, one of them, or, you know, each of them were, instead of having three curb cuts for three separate businesses, you had two that served all three, that would be?
Yeah. So we would just add something to the code that would say that they would not be able to have the, they have to utilize the existing.
Existing.
System access for other parcels, yeah?
When, when do you think you would be able to get a map to us? I'm not expecting it, like.
Well, if, if, apart from a special-called meeting, I can definitely have a map ready for you for the next meeting. No problem there, it's almost done.
Okay. Just sort of clarity, so you'll have one that shows how it is right now, it's a 660, and then one separate with 1,000?
Correct.
Could you also find out when that last transportation comes on the list?
Yeah. All right, and can we go back to language just a minute? Yes, ma'am. So if all we change is the first part of this, and we leave the second part, we leave item two unchanged, do you see that as being detrimental going forward to the intentions that you outlined previously about what the public was worried about with over-density?
Just to be clear, what do you mean by one? Do you mean just 1A, like just changing?
Yes, ma'am. So, so the only change proposed up, up top was in Section A to get the language to match what's in the current code, right?
Yeah, that would, that would really do nothing.
Right, but if, if number two did not change and stayed as it is written today, do you see that continuing to increase the density in these areas different than what was asked for in the survey that you did?
So, just to be clear, I got the question correct. So are you saying to just do 1A and not change a thing on number two?
That's correct. If that's what happened.
If that's what happens, then it would be status quo, and we would continue on doing as we're doing right now.
And, and as status quo, do you see that being in contradiction to the things you pointed out to us about the survey that was conducted on the public? So if you go a couple more slides past where you were answering the questions?
So I would say that.
Right here.
Status quo is, is what came out of those public meetings. So what came from those public meetings was what was written in, in the, in the text amendment, in the separation. So yes, anything changed in that would maybe lessen it, it would change, but it may not be detrimental. But it would lessen, it would change what they wanted to be able to.
Okay, so you're, you're being.
As a degree.
You're being very, very specific, so I'm going to go with the second part of the question. And so the first part, if I've heard you correctly, is not changing item two would still meet what the public asked for out of this?
Correct.
Changing it now to what is proposed, would that be even better than what the public thought they were getting? Or would it be less than what they thought they were getting when they made that request? And I'm not sure if you can answer that.
It would be different.
Okay.
But the degree of difference and detrimental, I don't think it's a huge change, but it would definitely be different, and it may not meet their expectations.
Okay. Thank you.
If I might, like, I think the biggest difference is the land use.
Sure.
I mean, you're going to end up.
Sure.
It's either like businesses or the businesses that were in the original.
I, I understand, and that, that's what I'm trying to get my head wrapped around of exactly what is changing, and how is that still aligning or not aligning with what came out of the public meetings and what the public asked to have happen.
Right, because now you're opening up and saying, instead of you've got to be separate from all these folks, you've got to be separated from yourself. And so that just makes sense, that now you're going to lessen that, what they can, they can increase where they can go.
I'm with you.
That might lessen their, their expectations.
And what, what I'm driving at here is not just for my own understanding, but for folks that may be watching this, or will re-watch this later to understand, because these can be very complex issues in the way the wording gets put into a regulation. But what does that mean in real life to the residents? And trying to make sure that we're all communicating effectively to the public, here's what's really being proposed here, I know what you think you heard, but this is what's actually happening. This is the ramifications of what it could mean. This is the effect it could have on your community, and, and to really understand what that might look like.
I can pull back to this one here. So this is how we implement that change. And so by doing that, it went from being nobody can go there to now a drive-through restaurant. So that might give you the scale of the change, because it was more about not just the sameness, it was the distance. That was sort of that trade-off, your mention.
Right.
Okay, we're going to loosen it up by saying, you can have these uses here, but we're going to increase it that distance by 1,000 to make sure it doesn't open it up too much. So that's that balancing between those two parts of the ordinance. And by doing that, in this, in this instance, it shows that you can just get one more use.
Right, whereas if the language remained as it is today, you're within 660, and you could do a lot of things in there, right?
If it was, if, yes, if it was the same and 660, is that what you're saying?
I'm, I'm saying, the way the language is today, it was any of those, so you're basically, you would eliminate all of those.
All of them.
Completely, right?
Yes, yes.
So the only thing that you could get under the change would be, there could be the possibility of a restaurant there.
Correct.
Nothing else.
Correct.
Okay.
And if you, if you go even further, if you didn't increase that 1,000 feet, so just imagine, these are drawn to scale, so that's 1,000 feet. So if you were to pull back that arrow by 400 and whatever, I don't do math, and you're, you would see that might then open up this piece of property to some other uses by scaling it back. So that was the combination of the two.
Right. So, so by, by increasing the distance and making it the same-use exception, not by your, their same-use change that you can't double up on that, that's how you're able to get a drive-through in this condition that you wouldn't in the other?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have a question, Kate?
No, it's, okay.
What would be the effect if one or more of these uses were to be classified under a different zoning?
What do you mean by different zoning?
Like if self-storage were to be in another zoning category.
So, right now, self-storage is allowed in GC and LI. So if you were to remove it from GC and just have it in LI, is that, that would be the alternative? Is it more of a storage as opposed to be in a retail commercial kind of place? Is it more of a storage as opposed to be in a retail commercial kind of place?
Yeah.
That might have an effect as well. You'd then be making properties that would be non-conforming.
And they wouldn't be able to expand.
Right. You know, there are still properties here that are, I have to go back and look and see what's zone L I now and see what, what there are. But you would be eliminating some properties that currently are zone G C that could go there.
But then, once you do that, what the future of that piece of property looks like could change? Because now you've changed uses by? If, if you're, if you're?
Like, I would just say, moving that to a, to a different district in the land, the properties would stay the same, be considered non-conforming until they decide to either?
Well, I would hope that council might come back there and do a council sheet of rezoning to move those properties L I, so they're no longer non-conforming.
Right.
They can do that.
And so, the point that I'm making is then that piece of property has had a zoning change, and now, what does that do about uses of it? Went from G C to L I, and now what else could I put there now that by right I could? If I wanted to tear that down and put something else there, right?
Well, that's something just?
That's right.
All that kind of cascading effect can happen that we have to be careful of, right?
Yes, there may be some places that are currently are a storage facility that you would not want to go to L I because of that, where they're located.
Motion?
Yeah, does anybody have any other questions for Diane? If not, do we have a motion?
I have a motion to defer to the next meeting pending the receipt of both the TIA information, the map, and any other questions that we may need answers to. I just think we would be doing both the residents and council a disservice if we don't adequately review everything that's available. So, my motion would be to defer to the next planning meeting.
I second that, but I want to add too, as far as my question is, can we, is it possible? If we can see what a, a special exception process would look like?
Sure.
For these auto-oriented uses? But I second that motion.
Okay. All right, do we have any other, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Anybody else like to make any other points? I, just for the record, I agree with you. I would like to have as much information as possible?
Yes.
To make an informed decision.
Thank you.
So?
Yeah, ve- very, very important decision we got here.
So, with that, motion and a second, there's no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion to defer? Anyone opposed? No?
All right. Can I, can I ask a quick trailing question, just in general? Does the county ever request TIA's for anything? Or is that only done on the development side?
Yeah, we don't do that, unless we had a project that we needed a TIA for our own projects. But we don't request that others to do it, no. They just apply themselves.
So, to some of the questions that were about the larger area now, if, if we really wanted to get the data for that, that's almost impossible to obtain unless the county might move forward and say, we would like to have a TIA done for this space.
Right, so I think what I was telling to Tom, I, I can go ahead and look and see what do we have submitted over some number of years that's relevant now, because maybe too old? And then provide some information to be able to adjust, just to kind of get an idea of level of service at the different intersections. That's what I want.
Well, you know, thorough, I, I was just going to add thoroughfare plans, thoroughfare transportation plans take into what uses that are projected along the road to.
Right, we don't have one for this property.
What's that?
We don't have one for this area for a thoroughfare plan.
Right.
Um, but I will say that there was recently, ORFAT's did a 49 corridor plan, and they may have some data there.
That would be nice to have too.
I'll go have a look at that and see if they have some?
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Diane, would the last one have been the apartments that are next to Tractor Supply? Is that something that?
They would have one, so would the Harris Teeter site further down?
Okay. So, you have a couple of options?
So, just the 49 part, I think it would be harder to find. 274, I can find stuff. 49's harder.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next item is a public project review, the plan and commission to receive for informational purposes only, the general construction documentation of the replacement of the Crowder's Creek pump station.
So, this is new to you guys, so that's why I'm just going to give you one slide, you can overlook what we're doing here. And so, we now have a process to review new public projects, and those would include large park and race facilities, county government facilities, as well as any large sewer infrastructure. And this came out, it's actually straight from the South Carolina code. We just implemented that as part of RECODE to be able to handle these public reviews. There's two different kinds, two levels. One of them is large projects, which would be your larger parks, recreation, government buildings, and large sewer projects, or smaller ones. And they have two different levels of how we review things. In this case here, this is the Crowder's Creek pump station replacement, and it falls under the, the smaller project. And so, this is just to give it to you for informational purposes only. You have no approval or discussion for it. So, if you have questions, I can maybe, maybe answer a question.
What's the delineation line between?
There you go.
Large and small? That was really, it's probably my only one.
Well, it does say that for the small is, for, for utility ones, it's, those that distribute water, wastewater, electricity, natural gas, or communications are exempt. So, think about the distribution part of it. Those are the ones that would be smaller. And for, maybe for the parks, if they were just adding a small area, like if they were just small expansion kind of thing.
So, it's not a dollar amount?
No, no.
Okay.
It's scale, it's size, it's?
Okay.
Anyone have any questions about that, I guess, just to ask?
I would say, so this is just one of those situations where it's just time for a replacement, basically, right?
Yes.
And an upgrade?
Upgrading it.
Yeah.
Yeah. When I was?
Well, yeah, that too.
When I was county engineer, that's when we, we put in Crowder's Creek.
Yes, and now it's time.
Yeah.
Diane, does it also?
Many years ago.
Does it also include access? It looks like there's currently access off Field, Field Eight Lane. Is that, is there improvement in that access as well as part of the?
There's no, there's no change to that, yeah. They're just going to keep using that same road, that same, easement that goes back and through there.
They don't need to widen it or curb it or anything else?
No.
No.
No, it's restricted, if I'm correct?
Yep. Sorry.
That area back there is restricted?
Right, for?
Skated off?
Yes.
Right, for county vehicles.
Yeah, so it's not like anybody's?
It's best to?
It's surface, I, I?
Well, should, I can't remember, yeah. It's been a while.
Yeah.
All right, if nobody else has any questions, move on to the rezoning sheet. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Could you review the few that council has either, that are either on hold or that we approved and they denied?
Sure. So, there's one on hold right now that should hopefully coming forward to council actually next week, or next council meeting. That's that first one, they're 2319. Maybe just been working for the applicant to get ahold of some, uh, uh, conditions and a de-restrictions. And that's just about done. Then further down, the one that's also on hold there, 2337, that was a code enforcement case, and they actually have a, they were living within their garage. So, we're taking care of the code enforcement thing, so we're trying to work through that one. Hopefully, we can get that taken care of. Further down was the straight one, was, was denied by council. I believe you approved it as well as staff. And there was a large public output that came, that came out against that one, and so, that one was denied. Um, I think those are the only ones right now that are on that list that are on hold or being denied.
Thank you.
And I, I believe the next item is to go into executive session to receive advice on settlement?
Yes, sir, you still need a motion to motion.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to go into executive session?
I'll second.
All those in favor? All right, we will be going into executive session.
Thank you, Diane, for counting on the calendar. All right, returning from executive session, we took no action in executive session. However, we are going to move ahead and I will make a motion to approve the settlement agreement that was presented to us tonight and also it being a condition of receiving a revised plat. So is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further... Yes, I'm sorry. Presented with the changes discussed in executive session and the receipt of the revised plat would be the motion.
I'll say second.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. Do we also need to designate the signator right now?
That can be a second, second motion.
All right, so first motion, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? So the second item would be designating a signator for the settlement.
I say I should, I'll move that, that MAFDR signature.
I'll second.
All right, is there any other discussion with that? Not?
No.
All those in favor? Close, you know? If there's no other, if there's no other issues, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Vote, all those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.